Lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Aubrey Souza, our junior Ms. Apple Peach, is a ten-year-old attending Ford Middle School. Her favorite part, being junior Ms. Apple Peach, is meeting people in the community, volunteering at events around town. And she says she loves visiting Acushnet Creamery as often as possible for ice cream. And her favorite is a dairy-free ice cream. Aubrey, please approach the microphone and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And thank you for your assistance. All rise, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Aubrey. Welcome, everyone, to the September 3, 2025 Acushnet Special Forum Town Meeting. My name is Wes Taken, and I'm Lieutenant of the Corps. I've been informed that the warrant has been properly executed and returned its service in accordance with our violence. I'd now like to begin by introducing the head table, starting with the gentleman closest to me.
Darren Klein, KPLR Town Council, good evening, everyone.
Jamie Kelly, Town Administrator.
Jamie Belasquez, Assistant Town Attorney.
Kevin Gasp, Board of Selectmen.
David Warnock, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Bob Engley, Board of Selectmen.
Mike Boucher, Chairman of the Finance Committee.
Peter Whitey, Town Clerk.
Thank you. And now the Finance Committee, starting with the gentleman closest to the hallway. We need more microphones, folks.
Lisa Thompson, Finance Committee.
Kristen Flynn, Finance Committee.
Eric Williams, Finance Committee.
Eric Ching, Finance Committee.
Pete White, Finance Committee.
And now at the far table, the School Committee members, again, starting with the gentleman closest.
Ryan Hood, Chair of the School Committee.
John Halperoff, School Committee.
Ebony McLean, School Committee.
Jesse Ellis, School Committee.
Thank you. At this time, David Warnock, the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, would like to address the Town Meeting. David, the floor was yours.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to share with folks, I had made the announcement about a month ago that I will not be seeking reelection. I'm saying this tonight without fanfare, but more as a call to service. For those of you who are interested in serving, think you'd be a great selectman, please spread the word, whether you're here tonight or not. It's a great vocation, it's a great use of your time, and that's the purpose of me making this announcement tonight, is to use this forum, that if you think that you care about the town and you want to see it succeed, and you're in it for the right reasons, it's the job for you, it's a great job, and it's well worth your time. So I encourage all of you who have an interest to talk to your families, and get organized, and spend time doing it. So thank you very much, Mr. Moderator, appreciate it.
Thank you, David, for your many years of service to the town. And now, as we must, onto the business at hand. First, I'd like to thank all of you for coming. We know you all are busy, demanding lines, and we appreciate the privilege of your time. Each and every one of you tonight will have the opportunity to question, comment, amend, modify, and ultimately approve or reject each article in the warrant. This is your meeting and your tax laws. Your participation is not only encouraged, it is your absolute right. A few housekeeping items. Please note that the center floor is reserved for registered voters in town and department heads only. Non-registered voters, visitors, and observers are to be seated to decide seating end. Each registered voter was presented with a white card tonight upon verification of their voting status. Those cards will be the only means of voting when raised to be counted. If you haven't already, kindly silence any cell phones so as not to disturb the meeting. Please note the location of the emergency exit nearest you in the event we need to evacuate the building. And the restrooms are in the hallway to my right. I'm going to go through what I call a process summary, for those of you who may not have heard it before. I won't be reading every article verbatim, but will provide a summary of each. The full text is on the handouts provided to you when you enter. If you would like to speak on an article, line under the microphone. Non-residents will not be allowed to speak unless they are department heads, town employees, or a majority of the registered voters agree to let them speak. When recognized by the moderators, clearly state your name and town address before speaking. You have the absolute right to understand what you're voting on. Articles are written to comply with the law, and the full intent of the article may not be clear to you as well as others. Everyone here is entitled to question any aspect of an article, and we will address every question asked. Procedurally, all questions shall be directed through the moderator to maintain decorum and make efficient use of our time. You are to speak only to the motion at the moment. Rude or disrespectful speech will not be tolerated. Direct conversations between participants will only be allowed if it serves to answer important questions and is deemed to be beneficial to the meeting efficiency. Please remember there was a distinct difference between questions and answers in debates. All may speak on a motion as many times as they like, but no one may speak twice until all who wish to speak have spoken once. I do reserve the right to limit discussion once we reach the onerous point of repetition. And without objection, I reserve the right to recess at any point. Motions must be made to amend any line item which will be voted on. Then we'll need to vote on the article as a whole. Motions to amend must be in writing and signed above the printed name of the proponent. When an article has multiple line entries, I may read each line item individually if not included in the motion. And if that occurs and we wish to discuss any line item, please raise your hand and say "hold" when I read that line. We will return to any held items when all are read. And you need not identify yourself to hold the line item, but be prepared to speak on it when we return to it. That's enough rules and regs. Let's get started. Article One, Payment of Prior Years' Bills. To see if the town will raise and appropriate, transfer from free cash or otherwise provide for a transfer from available funds, the total sum of $22,315.11 to pay bills from prior fiscal years, you should have the table in front of you or take any other action there on in relation there to. Motion will take a 90% approval rate for passage. Will I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $21,208.95 and to transfer from the Gulf Enterprise Reserve Fund the sum of $1,106.16 for a total of $22,315.11 to pay for the following unpaid bills from the prior fiscal years.
Will I have a second? Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee recommended this article unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, Gary Rockwood, 74 Metcalf Way. I'm just looking for some clarification. I know we do this every year, and I'm cool with paying the bill for services we're rendered. Just, you have the 22824 legal KP, that's going back over here, that's a little... Can you, somebody explain how that fell through? And can somebody explain how technologies for Tyler Technologies, that's a whole year, is it a year? Oh, no, one month's worth of services for $6,000, but that goes all the way back to 2023. Can we just explain why it took so long to catch these bills to the Bible Chat family, please?
Thank you. Who would like to answer this?
Ms. Moderator, these bills fell through the cracks when we had multiple changes in the finance office. Because of that, we did a complete review of past bills, invoices, et cetera, with the staff we have now, and we found these bills. They are bills that services were rendered for, but they were misplaced in files that they shouldn't be in or the like. Staff apologizes to the town, but it's something when you have multiple people that are leaving and you have people coming in on a temp basis, some things like this happen. And that's why with the staff we have now, we went back through the almost three years of files to find out if there was anything that fell through the cracks, and this is our cleanup effort.
Any further discussion? Here are none, we'll put it to a vote. Please remember, folks, these were goods and services received in prior years, but we received the bill except the two Mr. Rockwood mentioned in his comment that's included. All those in favor? Those opposed? Article One, passage and amendment.
Mr. Moderator, may I ask one more question before we continue? It's about the amount of, it's about the free cash, okay? It's just a real quick, simple question.
Go ahead.
It's not going to get up. We're going to spend 1.5 million if everything passes, if I'm correct. And there's 1.8, so we're going to put about 300,000 away somewhere, I would assume, at the end. But I'm curious, now I know that we get free cash from unused portions of the budget from...
Excuse me, Mr. Rockwood, is this about the prior years' bills?
No, I just, the code we get one. Can I?
But that's beyond the scope of the article.
Here's the question. How much of this free cash is what the school department returned? That's the number I'm looking for. It's not in book anywhere, I'm just curious.
That's beyond the scope of the article.
It's not ever going to get talked about in any article, so how do I get that answer?
I think you need to call the school department.
So you don't want to give up?
Beyond the school, beyond the scope of the article.
Okay. No, I'm good, thank you.
Article Two. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from free cash or other available funds, or otherwise provide sums of money to fund amended amounts in various accounts tabled below, that were previously voted in Article 31 of the June 16, 2025 Annual Town Meeting for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, or take any other action there on or in relation there to. Board of Health, salaries for a principal court, additional amount requested due to reclassification, $3,520. Police Department, $5,944 for training and testing at the assessment center, with a total of $9,264. This article will amend and reconcile budgets to expected balances. The FY '26 budget contains items that will require an adjustment based on final appropriations if approved. This will require a simple majority vote. Will I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town folks to amend Article 31 of the June 16, 2025 Annual Town Meeting by transferring from free cash the sum of $9,464, $3,520 to account number 551, Board of Health, and $5,944 to account number 2210, Police Department.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee recommended this article unanimously.
Any discussion? Here are no discussions, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article Two? Those opposed? Article Two passed unanimously. Article Three, Amendment, Fiscal Year 2026 Capital Budget, Article Two of the Annual Town Meeting from June 16, 2025. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from free cash or other available funds, or otherwise provide sums of money to fund amended amounts in various accounts as shown on the table below, previously voted in Article 22 of the June 16, 2025 Annual Town Meeting for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, or take any other action there on or in relation there to. The initial amount needed for the council on aging was to install four heating, ventilation, and air conditioning units. A new additional item for the town building to upgrade the fire alarm system on the Potting Ways Building, $7,000. Two new police cruisers, $170,000. They were originally suspended from purchase in fiscal year '25 and included in the fiscal year '26 budget. A street sweeper, an additional amount of $4,000. This article floods the various departmental capital projects and equipment purchases, not included in the original capital budget, and amends previously approved items because of increased costs since the original quotes. It also includes two new items not addressed previously, an upgrade and repair to the Potting Ways Building alarm system, and the purchase of two new police cruisers. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to amend Article 22 of the June 16, 2025 Annual Town Meeting by transferring from free cash the sum of $190,000 to fund amended amounts in various accounts, see table below, that were previously voted in Article 22 of the June 16, 2025 Annual Town Meeting for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025.
Will I have a second?
Second.
Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee recommended this article unanimously.
Any discussion? Here are no discussions, we'll put it to a vote. This will be a simple majority. All those in favor? Those opposed? Article Three, passage and amendment. Article Four, Amending Article 10 of the Special Town Meeting, September 30, 2024. See if the town will vote to transfer previously appropriated EMS reserve funds from Article 10 of the September 30, 2024 Special Town Meeting, in the amount of $20,199, to complete the equipping and necessary modifications to a new fire engine tube, including but not limited to new portable radios, IMC technology, and cabinet modifications for tool storage and other items as needed, or take any other action there on or in relation there to. After we completed the repairs to Fire Station Number Three, there's a balance of $20,199 remaining in the article. Making this change allows us to continue to equip and outfit the new engine tube with all the necessary equipment and modifications to ensure maximum usefulness. This includes but not limited to portable radios, IMC technology, and cabinet modifications for tool storage and other items as needed. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer previously appropriated EMS reserve funds from Article 10 of the September 30, 2024 Special Town Meeting, in the amount of $20,199, to complete the equipping and necessary modifications to a new fire engine tube, including but not limited to new portable radios, IMC technology, and cabinet modifications for tool storage and other items as needed. Say it.
Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee recommended this article unanimously.
Any discussion? Here are no discussions, we'll put it to a vote. This will require a simple majority. All those in favor? Those opposed? Article Four, passage and amendment. Article Five, Rescind Article 11 Borrowing for an Advanced Life Support Ambulance, the Special Town Meeting dated September 30, 2024. See if the town will vote to rescind the unused borrowing authorization from Article 11 of the September 30, 2024 Special Town Meeting, in the amount of $600,000 for purchase and equipping of an advanced life support ambulance in the Acushnet Fire EMS Department, or take any other action there on or in relation there to. Folks, Article Five and Article Six are related. Article Five rescinds the borrowing for the ambulance, our next article, purchase it without the need to borrow from free cash and EMS reserve revenues. This will require a simple majority vote. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to rescind the unused borrowing authorization from Article 11 of the September 30, 2024 Special Town Meeting, in the amount of $600,000 for purchase and equipment of an advanced life support ambulance for the Acushnet Fire and EMS Department.
Will I have a second?
Second.
Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee recommended this article unanimously.
Any discussion? Here are no discussions, we'll put it to a vote. Again, simple majority. All those in favor? Those opposed? Article Five, passage and amendment. Article Six, Funding the Purchase of the Advanced Life Support Ambulance. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds filed for or accept and expend grants, and or matching funds provided by grants, or otherwise provide a sum or sum of money, not to exceed $475,000, to purchase and equip an advanced life support ambulance for the Acushnet Fire and EMS Department, or take any other action there on or in relation there to. As we rescinded the previous article for the advanced life support ambulance, the Board of Selectmen is proposing to utilize $275,000 in free cash and $200,000 from EMS revenues for the purchase of the apparatus. Currently, there's $1,090,900 in EMS revenue account. This will be, again, a simple majority vote. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $275,000 and in addition, to transfer the sum of $200,000 from EMS revenues for the purchase and equipping of an advanced life support ambulance.
Do I have a second? Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee recommended this article unanimously.
Here are no discussions, oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, Deborah Derris, 616 VT. I'm just wondering why all of this is coming out of EMS revenue? Why do we divide them up? It seems like they have plenty of money in their accounts.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
So only $200,000 from the $1,090, whatever's inside that account right now bring us down to about $800,000, and we have other things that we are purchasing from EMS reserve receipt account, and the town also uses $550,000 of EMS reserve receipt account to balance the general operating budget every year. So to bring that level down any lower than what we're at right now, the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator and the Finance Committee felt that that wouldn't be in the best interest of the taxpayers, so we held off on doing that, and we funded as much as we could from free cash, and as you can see, we borrowed, took a little less from the EMS reserve receipt account to make it a balanced approach.
Thank you, Mr. Gasp. Any other discussion?
Can I try asking a question a bit of a way this time, Mr. Taken?
Should we please identify yourself, or we all know you, Mr. Taken?
I'm Gary Rockwood, 74 Metcalf Way. So let me ask it this way. The amount of free cash that we're using to buy this ambulance, $275,000, could I say that that's...
Excuse me.
Could I, I'm asking?
But this is beyond the scope of the article, this is for the end.
That's what I'm asking. The $275,000 in free cash, right?
Are you using that to buy the ambulance?
Correct.
Or rather?
Okay. It could be, is it fair to say that could be the school committee's portion of the
Waiting for someone to...
Mr. Moderator, I can't give an exact number, as I'm not the town accountant, but I can tell you, based on past knowledge that I have, I believe the school department returned somewhere in the realm of $300,000 of free cash the previous year.
Thank you. Enjoy your evening.
Any further discussion? Here are none, we'll put it to a vote. This will be a simple majority reply. All those in favor? Article Six, passage and amendment. Article Seven, Funding EMA Department of Public Works Repeater. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from free cash, transfer from available funds, file for, accept, and expend grants and or matching funds provided by grants, or otherwise provide a sum or sum of money, not to exceed $35,000, for the purchase of a new radio system repeater, as well as radio and other associated equipment, or take any other action there on or in relation there to. The repeater for the EMA Department of Public Works radio frequency, commonly referred to as the government channel, is in need of an upgrade due to age and poor performance. The upgrade to a radio system will cap off a complete upgrade of all the emergency services' radio systems within the town. This, again, requires a simple majority. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from free cash, file for, accept, and expend grants, and or matching funds provided by grants, or otherwise provide a sum for the payment of $35,000 for the purchase of a new radio system repeater, as well as radio and other associated equipment.
Will I have a second?
Second.
Finance Committee Recommendation.
The Finance Committee recommended this article unanimously with one member abstention.
Any discussion? Here are none, we'll put it to a vote. Again, simple majority. All those in favor? Here are none. We'll put it to a vote. Again, simple majority. All those in favor? Those opposed? Article Seven passes unanimously. Article Eight.
Mr. Moderator, make a motion to take this indefinitely.
Second.
Mr. Hinckley, could we have a friendly amendment to postpone this indefinitely?
Sure. Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to postpone this indefinitely.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We need a majority vote to postpone this. All in favor of postponing this article indefinitely? We failed to finalize the contract negotiations prior to meeting. Those opposed? Article Eight postponed indefinitely. Unanimous. Article Nine, funding health insurance past claims and litigation. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from free cash or transfer from available funds in the sum of $625,000 to fund FY '24 and FY '25 health insurance claims in excess of premiums, health insurance runout claims, and associated litigation, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. This article will fund any past claims or deficits as a result of the unexpected cost of catastrophic cases, past IBNR runout claims, which stands for incurred but not reported, and associated litigation costs for the town to prosecute the case. This will need a simple majority. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $625,000 to fund FY '24 and FY '25 health insurance claims in excess of premiums, health insurance runout claims, and associated litigation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance Committee Recommendation.
The Finance Committee recommended this article unanimously with one member abstention.
Any discussion?
I have a question, Mr. Moderator. Gary Rockland, 74, Metro Way. Oh, is that the actual bill? Or are we just establishing a fund to take care of these casualties?
Who was like that?
Moderator.
Yes.
Litigation has not commenced, but we are before the court. And the court asked for a good faith show that the town will be proceeding with the other towns that have joined us in litigation against its group, be proceeding with both costs of litigation and with potential costs to the town because of these cases. The problem we have at this point is costs associated with the IBNR runout claims will not be known for nine months. And at the same time, we have retained an audit for CLA because we're not sure of the figures that are coming from MSHG and the two insurance administrators.
Okay. No, no, I'm following you. So we're gonna... You're gonna...
It's in a wallet again, yeah. More than... It's in a wallet to show good faith.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Here are none. We'll put it to a vote. Again, simple majority. Pass. All those in favor? Those opposed? Article Nine passes unanimously. Article Ten, amend Article Twelve of the Annual Town Meeting dated March 10, 1962, establishing the Conservation Commission. See if the town will vote to amend Article Twelve of the Annual Town Meeting, March 10, 1962, by deleting the phrase "to appoint a conservation commission composed of seven members" and replace it with the phrase "to appoint a conservation commission composed of five members." This changes, as I just read, Conservation Commission from the seven-member, five-member board. Presently, there are two vacancies on the commission and no one volunteering to serve. This makes meeting a quorum and conducting scheduled business difficult. The Board of Selectmen proposes the new membership composition to solve these issues. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, make a motion to amend Article Twelve of the Annual Town Meeting of March 10, 1962, establishing the Conservation Commission. I move the town vote to approve Article Ten. It's written in the warrant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I don't need a Finance Committee recommendation for this. Is there any discussion? Here are none. We'll put it to a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Article Ten passes. Majority vote with opposition. Article Eleven, fund the golf course clubhouse borrowing. See if the town will vote to transfer from the Golf Enterprise Reserve Fund, transfer from the Golf Enterprise Retained Earnings Fund, from Golf Enterprise Earnings, available funds, borrow, file for, accept, and expend grants and/or matching funds provided by grants, or otherwise provide a sum or sums of money not to exceed $3,500,000 to design, engineer, construct, purchase, equip a golf course clubhouse, and legal expenses, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. This project is recommended by the Golf Facility Exploratory Committee and the Golf Management and Operational Advisory Committee. After many sessions and meetings, they've reported preliminary conceptual plans to the Board of Selectmen. In consultation with these committees, the Board of Selectmen must finalize design and engineering plans and move forward to construction. It's the intent of the Board of Selectmen to primarily fund the project with $1,250,000 from the Golf Enterprise Retained Earnings Fund, and then to borrow $2,250,000 through a bond anticipating note. A bond note is a short-term debt instrument issued by a municipality to provide temporary financing for projects and can be paid off in under 10 years. And presently, it's $2,250,685 in the Golf Enterprise Retained Earnings Fund. This vote, folks, would take a two-thirds majority to pass. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate $3,500,000 for designing, engineering, constructing, purchasing, equipping the golf course clubhouse, legal expenses, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto. Now, to meet this appropriation, transfer $1,250,000 from the Golf Enterprise retained earnings and the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow $2,250,000 on the General Lodge, Chapter 44, subsection 815, or any other enabling authority in that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out the project.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends this article unanimously. And I'd also like to add, Mr. Moderator, just to clarify, the 2.25 million that is being borrowed is not coming from taxation. That is coming out of the golf course retained earnings. So if anybody was concerned about that, it is not coming from taxation. We feel that investing in our golf course is important for long-term future. We have a world-class golf course here with no functioning clubhouse. This will bring in more revenue for the town long-term. It would be considered a key piece to economic development as we go down the road.
Thank you, Dr. Bouchet. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Moderator, when the Board of Selectmen were... We've been petitioned by the Golf Management Committee and a lot of customers saying that something needs to be done with the clubhouse and the facility there. So when we decided to move forward with this initiative, we know we have a great golf management committee, but we wanted to get some additional set of eyes on the project because we wanted to make sure that emotion didn't drive the process. Because sometimes we get into building projects and you get really excited about the prospects of things and they balloon out of control. And so when we put together the Golf Exploratory Committee, we were thrilled with literally an all-star team of people coming from the golf community, builders, estimators, people that have worked at golf facilities, also relying on our own staff. And we couldn't have been more impressed with the group of people that spent countless, countless hours exploring this project and coming back with a recommendation. So I know Mr. DeRosa is the chair of the committee and Mr. Flynn is chair of the Golf Management Committee will speak to that. But also, Mr. Gasper was very creative in looking at the financing aspect of it. But I just want to assure you that when the board gave the green light to this project, is that we wanted again to make sure that we had the best and brightest in town looking at this from all angles. So that's what you have here before you this evening. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Gasper.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as Mr. Wonau alluded to, we formed the Golf Exploratory Committee along with the Golf Management Committee. They worked in tandem to come up with something that looked that we could all live with and a number not to exceed. And quite honestly, $3.5 million, it's a lot of money. But from what we can see and what we know, we would need to improve revenues at the golf course, $3.5 million, I think we could pay it off relatively quickly. So it was one of my ideas to take 1.25 from retained earnings because they have 2.5 in retained earnings, which is basically, for those of you who don't know, it's basically a piggy bank. It's a stabilization account from that enterprise fund. Leave in 2.25 million to ban, which is short-term borrowing. And I ran some finance numbers on a five-year payback because I was adamant, looking out for the people's best interests of this community to make sure that the debt never falls back on the taxpayers of the town. So the first year runs about $517,000. And yeah, that sounds like a lot of money. But when we first financed the golf course, we were running about $570,000 principal and interest. It wasn't until somewhere around 2015, '17, the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Wonau was on the board with me at the time, we refinanced the golf course for seven years because golf kind of went into detour hole. So we were able to save on refinancing and pushing it out seven more years, an additional $200,000 of principal and interest. And we believe that we pretty much saved the taxpayers from ever having anything put on you. What I won't say about a ban is there's an additional 2.25 million left forward. We have not come to the conclusion that what was presented to the Board of Selectmen, the design and things, the Board of Selectmen did have questions about that. We will be working with the Golf Exploratory Committee and the Golf Management Committee to weaken that design plan. But with the 1.25 million from retained earnings, it sets us off. The Golf Management Committee can continue working with the engineer and the Board of Selectmen, moving forward with the design, not losing grasp of that engineer. And what we'll do is, as we need money, we can spend the 1.25. The golf course is in good shape right now, generating a couple hundred thousand dollars into retained earnings. So as we move forward in steps, when we need to ban, we wouldn't just go out. And the number I gave you, the 517 on interest, would be taken out 2.25 million. After I've learned a little bit of board about bans, we would not need to ban the whole 2.25 at once. So we could ban smaller increments, bringing, driving down that interest way down and making this project a lot more affordable as far as the borrowing costs go and the overall principal and interest. So I do believe that we could build this clubhouse, as I said to the people a while back, in five years. The payment plan is five years at 3.5. And I honestly think we can do it now after knowing what I know and less than that. So I think at this point, 3.5 million is a pretty good number.
Mr. Moderator, a turnover to my colleague, Mr. Hinckley, who is chairman of the board and put together this committee. Mr. Moderator, thank you. Just to echo Mr. Bouchet's point about not coming from taxation, a big point to note is that a large part of the golf course debt that we are still paying for comes off this upcoming year. So we're replacing a very short-term debt project that will result in a lot of revenue. And I got to commend everybody involved with this situation and this project, working together and coming up with a product that I think will benefit every single resident in this town in getting this debt paid off as quick as possible. And Mr. Gasper for coming up with a very creative way to do this and everybody else involved. I fully support this project.
Thank you, Mr. Hinckley. Is there any other discussion?
David Flynn, 361 B Road, I'm the chairman of the Golf Management Committee. Been on the committee for approximately 18, 19 years now. And I just want to say that, alluding to Dr. Bouchet and the economic development, we do bring in 35,000, 40,000 people every year to the town and pushing it down Main Street. Over the past 27 years, the course of end of existence, we've had varying amounts of debt since day one. And since day one, the golf course revenue was paid 100% of all the debt. It's never had $1 paid from taxpayer funds to operate the course or pay back. Any of the debt has been outstanding for 27 years. The current clubhouse, we can even call it a clubhouse, it's a trailer that's been there since day one. And we're really at the point now where at the end of a two-year process, where two years ago, we started with the National Golf Foundation doing a business plan review. From their independent plans of golf courses all across the country, they thought that this was a good investment for the town to make. The Golf Facility Exploratory Committee has spent a lot of time with the architect of the conceptual plan. And yes, as Mr. Gasper said, it's a conceptual phase now, but we know what we have the dollar parameters to deal with then. And that this will allow us to build upon the foundation of this great course that we have for the past 27 years, set us up for the next 27 years. And collectively with the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, and our banking consultants, we know that this is feasible and affordable. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, it's time to put it to a vote. This will take a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor? Those opposed? Article Eleven passes by two-thirds with opposition. Article Twelve, funding the school roof ban repayment. Again, ban stands for bond anticipation. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from free cash, transfer from the Special Capital Expenditure Fund from sole tax revenue. That's derived chapter 110 of the Acts of 2013. Or transfer from available funds the sum of $295,000 to pay for capital expenditures, capital improvements, and/or for the repayment of capital debt, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. The Special Capital Expenditure Fund from sole tax revenue was created in 2013 to pay for specific capital expenditures, such as the school roof project. Funding for this legislatively created fund is in act from sole tax revenue. This final payment of the note will eliminate any future ban interest payments and relieve the town of the cost of converting the ban to a regular bond borrowing instrument. It's the intent of the Board of Selectmen to retire the ban through the use of free cash in the amount of $242,352 and the Special Capital Expenditure Fund from sole tax revenue, Again, this will require a two-thirds vote to pass. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $242,352. and forty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars, and in addition, transfer the special capital expenditure fund from solar tax revenue, chapter one-ten of the Acts of two thousand thirteen, to sum of fifty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars to pay for the repayment of a capital debt in the form of a ban, which is the result of capital expenditures and capital improvements to the school roof.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance committee recommendation.
The Finance Committee recommends this article unanimously.
I've been informed by the town council that this will be a simple majority vote, not a two-thirds. Here we have discussion, we'll put it through a vote. Those opposed. Article twelve passes unanimously. Article thirteen, funding repairs to the elementary school roof and gym. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, transfer from free cash, or transfer from available funds to sum of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars or take any other action theron or in relation thereto. Board of Selectmen intends to commence a multi-year repair and maintenance program to fix the leaks and moisture issues in the elementary school. This year, the Board will fund this effort from free cash as part of an ongoing effort to address a myriad of previously neglected maintenance issues. This vote will require a simple majority. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from free cash to sum of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pay for capital expenditures and capital improvements to the elementary school roof.
Do I have a, did I get a second? I'm sorry, I talked, I talked over you, sorry. Finance committee recommendation.
Finance committee recommends this article unanimously.
Any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, just so everyone's aware, this section of the roof was a part of the roof that was not replaced with the original roof repair, which we just authorized to pay off. This particular area near the gym is the first step in a multi-level plan that myself, the rest of the Board, and the school committee, and various amounts of people have been working on to fix some issues with moisture at the elementary school. This is a good start. This has been leaking for a while, and we want to make sure that all the roof structure is complete and fixed as we move through the process.
Thank you, Mr. Hinckley.
Mr. Moderator, I just want to commend Mr. Hinckley on behalf of the Board. As you know, when it comes to school issues, we want to be supportive, but not to the point where we're micromanaging what they're doing here, but Mr. Hinckley, I think, has found the, struck the right balance between being helpful, supportive, and also being a liaison, and I rely heavily on him for information on behalf of the Board and the work that he's doing with the school. So thank you, bud.
Thank you, Mr. Wonar. Any further discussion? Of course, though, I can take your question. All of these roofs are broken.
Two thousand, the elementary school roof?
Yeah, this roof, the other roof, the whole.
So they just replaced that, what, two years ago, I think it was, three years ago, max? We did an MSBA grant, it was fifty percent reimbursed, actually it was about one point three million dollars, and apparently when that went out, they missed the roof over the gymnasium, and that led to leak problems slash mold problems and whatever else is going on over there. So I guess it's hundred and fifty's fixing the school roof on the gym side, but the school pod was just replaced and it's bad.
Mr. Moderator, the closet, I believe, was done during the renovations in two thousand two. Dr. Bailey, can you confirm that or anybody from the school committee? I believe the last time when they expanded the gymnasium and did all the modifications to the school, the closet was built. This one particular part that we just authorized, well, we're asking for the authorization for one fifty, is for a very specific lower roof that's not above the main part of the school. This is just to fix the masonry and the roof above what we, I guess you could essentially call the gym closet area, which is where the same area runs away from the building, where parents.
Where the leaks at? Where you suppose the leaks are and all that?
Well, some of the leaks.
Fixing the leaks is going to help take care of mold problem in the school?
Anytime you fix leaks, it should take care of something.
Should, thank you. Any further discussion? There are none, we'll put it through a vote. Again, a simple majority to pass. All those who favor, those opposed. Article thirteen passes unanimously. Article fourteen, amend the CPC article. Article twenty-five of the annual town meeting dated June sixteen, two thousand twenty-five. See if the town will vote to amend Article twenty-five of the June sixteen, twenty twenty-five annual town meeting by modifying the following amounts or take any other action theron or in relation thereto. From fiscal year twenty twenty-six, revenues for committee administrative expenses, thirteen thousand increase to fifteen thousand. FY twenty-six, revenues for historic resources reserve, twenty-six to thirty-five thousand. Community housing reserve, revenues from twenty-six to thirty-five thousand. Revenue to open space reserve, twenty-six thousand, thirty-five thousand. From the undesignated downs of the community preservation fund, eighty-five thousand to one hundred and twenty thousand, to a total of one hundred and seventy-six thousand to two hundred and forty thousand. And the reason for this is the value of property increases, the monies collected, the CPA perphecence increase. The CPA surtax as established by town meeting is one and a half percent. Excuse me, the town must annually appropriate the CPC monies into established categories. Because of the increase in property values and monies collected, the town must amend the previously appropriated amounts to reflect, reflect the actual collections. All monies appropriated but unspent at the end of the year revert back to CPC undesignated reserves. This will take a simple majority to pass. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to approve Article fourteen and amend Article twenty-five of the June sixteen, two thousand twenty-five annual town meeting, it's written in the warrant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance committee recommendation.
Finance committee recommends this article unanimously.
Any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, I just want to let people know that the Board, Board of Selectmen, a few meetings ago, we discussed CPC, CPA, and CPC and the one point five percent rate, and we agreed to advance, we want to do it this town meeting, we didn't have the time to do it, but it'll go forward in the spring to reduce that one point five to point five. While it's not a ton of money, it is, it would be some savings on your tax bill because as we just saw today, as values are going up, we're collecting the money that we need to, to do projects that we want to do, so we want to lessen the burden. It's a good faith effort by the Board to the residents and the taxpayers.
Is there any other discussion? There are none, we'll put it through a vote. It's a simple majority to pass. All those who favor, those opposed. Article fourteen passes unanimously. Article fifteen, cat TV, cable TV utility van with an aerial mounted bucket lift. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from the PEG Access and Cable Reserve Fund. PEG stands for Public Educational and Governmental Channels. Transfer from available funds, file for, accept and expend grants and/or matching funds provided by grants. Borrow or otherwise provide a sum or sums of money not to exceed forty-nine thousand dollars to purchase and equip a utility van with mounted aerial lift capability for the Akushnet Cable TV Department or take any other action theron or in relation thereto. Cable TV Reserve Fund funded from cable franchise fees and related revenues. It presently contains one million, fourteen thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars. In addition to maintenance and repairs for the town's fiber optic system, this vehicle will be used for remote events held by the town. This van will help the department utilize all of its audio/video equipment from one location when having to record outside events. This lift will also help with better positioning for recording events with large crowds. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from the PEG Access and Cable Reserve Funds, file for, accept and expend grants and/or matching funds provided by grants or otherwise provide a sum or sums of money in the amount of forty-nine thousand dollars to purchase and equip a utility van with mounted aerial lift capability for the Akushnet Cable TV Department.
Do I have a second? Finance committee recommendation.
Finance committee recommends this article unanimously, and Mr. Moderator, I'd just like to add, I believe this is our last article for the evening, correct?
Yes, it is.
Tonight represented a good example of how we're able to use our free cash and having it available to us to purchase a lot of these items, these capital expenses, without having to borrow or affect taxation. If we started going down the road of utilizing free cash to fund the operating budget, this would not be available to us for a meeting like tonight, and then we're going to be borrowing more money, which is something we don't want to do. So kudos to our Board of Selectmen, our Finance Department, and one final shout-out to Mr. Dave Wonar. Dave, it's been an honor serving with you on this Board and Committee sitting up here with you, it's been an honor, and you'll be missed, but your legacy will definitely live on. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, am I amending to that motion?
Please do.
I move the town vote to transfer from the PEG Access and Cable Reserve Funds a sum of forty-nine thousand dollars to purchase and equip a utility van with mounted aerial lift capability for the Akushnet Cable TV Department and further to file for, accept and expend grants and/or matching funds provided by grants for such vehicle to potentially reduce the expenditure of PEG Access and Cable Reserve Funds so appropriated.
Thank you. Do I have a second for the new motion?
Second.
We already have the Finance Committee recommendation. Is there any discussion? There are no discussion, we'll put it through a vote. All those in favor, this is a simple majority. Those opposed? Article fifteen passes unanimously. Having no further business, ladies and gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion to dissolve. Meeting dissolved.